My daughter's performing Thursday here for several.
Our music staff is always busy.
There's always time of year.
Her favorite teacher is here, too, right?
Yes.
I was hoping you would plug Thursday night.
So, in our handouts were the handout for town meeting from the school department. So, is this like the final or is there no chance to comment on these?
It's the final.
Okay, just wondering.
It's just a new pretty version, the final.
Yeah.
But it will be before. I mean, one of the questions we were asked at the League of Women Voters Night by an audience member, town meeting member, was how can we let the town meeting members know about the budget? So, I was just wondering if this is going to be...
That is being mailed tomorrow along with the warrant articles.
Okay.
By the town clerks. When we do have this ready in time, we try to combine with the town clerk and say one postage mail all those documents up together. In addition to that, Tuesday of next week, there'll be a mailing of the budget newsletter to every residence in town, which has some of the same information but more summary formatted.
Rather than the...
Right.
Okay, thanks.
The chairman's comments are the same as those, for example.
Jerry, also on the website is the whole budget, the January submission of that, right? Did we update it?
Yes, we have to do the updates with the changes that we gave before the public hearing.
Okay, because I think the public would appreciate that if you're...
How many sessions of the town meeting they're anticipating?
How many what?
Sessions.
I have no idea.
And we've even talked about that warrant committee.
So, on the fees, we're proposing to raise the athletic fee, but only the athletic fee at the high school, from $250 per student to $330 per student, $500 family max to $600 family max, which is a new innovation. Usually, the family max is double to single, but we decided to go slightly less than that. We're keeping the activity user fee portion for students who only are involved in clubs at the current $250, $500 family max. At the middle school, we're raising both the athletic and the student activity fee from $50 to $75, $125 family max. Transportation fee.
Oh, should we talk about these afterwards?
Sure, we can take questions one at a time.
Okay. John, do you mind if I... Okay. I just want to be clear. What we're talking about is a fee that covers both athletics and student activities and then a separate fee that only covers student activities. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Families whose children do sports and student activities, clubs, don't pay a combination of those two fees.
No, they don't, right.
Could I suggest that we rename the athletic fee to athletics slash student activity fee, or in some way indicate that it's both things? I know it's clear, I mean, I think it's clear to all of us, but I'm nervous about misinterpretations.
Right. And we had this discussion this afternoon with Mike Carvey and Jim Davis.
Oh, and what did they say? It was fine?
There was a question about Mike wanting to get it correct on the handbook. And they do understand it now, and hopefully they'll communicate that to people. If you take, say, a fall sport and then various clubs during the year, you pay only the $330.
Right.
If you take up to three sports, three seasons, you pay only the $330. If you take any number of clubs or student activities but no athletics, you pay only the $250.
Right.
So, those are the three options.
But not $580.
But not $580, no, that's right. Once you pay the higher amount for athletics, you're entitled to do whatever you want, participate in any number of sports or clubs throughout the whole year.
So, my suggestion is we rename it athletics and student activities.
Well, technically, it is named that now, which is the confusion. This is the first time we split the two.
Separate, right.
Yeah.
What's...
This is the first time we split the two.
Right.
And we do understand there's going to be some confusion about it, but we try to get information out through the high schools as quickly as possible.
Can it be student activities and student athletics and activities and activities only?
Yes.
Sure.
That's the kind of clarity I'd like to see. That would do it. I think we all understand it, I just want to be, you know... What you're saying, Jerry, is it's wrong in here now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The deletion on the top half of that page should not be deleted.
Right.
The deletion on the bottom half of that page, 22, is a correct deletion.
Although the wording in this says interest scholastic, one or more interest scholastic sports clubs or organizations, this will, you'll have to take out the interest scholastic sports, leave the sports and organization, then under athletics.
Correct.
Update, right. Gotcha.
Are there questions on the athletics and student activity?
No.
Okay. The bus fee, we are increasing that from $350 to $385 per child, $770 family max. The bus, the revenue generated by the bus fee has been consistently around 55%, 56%, 57% of the total cost of transportation, with the contract price going up since we rebid it. We're increasing the fee to keep this proportionality at what it is. And we announced that there would be a proportional increase in that bus fee from the very first time in January, we put out the superintendent's recommended budget even before we knew what the bids were. The full day kindergarten fee, you actually receive a revised copy of C1 with some different numbers on this. There's some good news and bad news on that. The bad news is, we've had a lot of discussions with the Department of Education about the grant requirements, and one of the grant requirements that we did not fully understand was the sliding scale. We are required to have a sliding scale for families up to 100% of the state median income. Our sliding scale is going to be based on only the federal free and reduced lunch standards, which basically only go up to about 50% of the state median income. So, you have attached to either C1 or C1 revised, what that sliding scale will look like for families of two through nine people per household. When I first did this in a hurry, when I sent out yesterday C1 revised, I thought that the fee would have to go up to $1,800 per year. However, I then looked at the results of the kindergarten registration, which was held last week through Friday at the Wellington, and we have a much higher percentage of students enrolled, not much, a slightly higher percentage of students enrolled in full day K than we had assumed when we built the fee schedule. We have, we are pleased to announce that there are 92% of students who have registered for full day K, 4% for half day K, and 4% that are still undecided. And that 4% for half day K represents 10 students, and the 4% undecided represents another 10 students. So, we could have anywhere from 92 to 96% of our students registering for full day K. So, I went back and did the recalculation, built in a slightly larger, more conservative margin for more families being eligible for partial waivers, and I now feel, and we've talked about this this afternoon with the chairman and the superintendent, that the recommended increase does not need to go to $1,800 per year, it can go only to $1,600 per year, and that's a number that we're comfortable with. And if we find out that the number of waivers, whole or partial, exceed our expectations, we do have a safety valve in terms of the state Medco grant. It sounds like what's coming out of legislature is a strong possibility there'll be an increase in the Medco grant, however, that's not yet final, so we can't count on that. But if there is an increase in the Medco grant, Dr. Alvin and I and Dr. Holland have talked about the fact, we'll take that increase, and if there's a shortfall in the revenue generated by the full day K fee, and apply that increase in the Medco grant to fund some of the classroom assistance, which the Medco grant had funded in the past. So, therefore, we do have that fallback position and a safety valve. I feel very comfortable that the $1,600 fee is both fair to families and fair to our commitment to fund this full day K.
So, Jerry, I just want to say, first of all, thank you. This is a, when I read this, it made sense to me, the scale did. I was also really happy to see this scale, I have to say. You know, as everybody knows, I've had some concerns about the issues of whether or not people would feel that they could get partial payments or, you know. I think this makes it very clear and easy for people, and so I'm very happy to see this. I assume that's why the state requires it.
Yes.
But I was very happy to see this. So, first of all, thank you for the due diligence. I also have to say, I'm happy that, I'm much happier with $1,600 than with $1,800. We had said 15, 16 is close enough, I was starting to get a little edgy about 18, because, you know, we've already had the conversation about how much we thought this would cost. So, I just want to say thank you, because I think it took a lot of work and obviously a lot of rework to get the numbers so that they made sense, and also do what we said we were going to do, which is cover the costs of the program. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. In the first year of a new venture like this, we have to build in a lot of assumptions. A year from now, we'll have a database to work with, we'll be much more exact, we won't have to be making assumptions on percentage participation, percentage free waivers, percentage partial waivers. We'll have one year database to track that, and we'll be able to go forward with more certainty. But I'm comfortable with the $1,600.
All right.
I'm just wondering, when the parents register their kids, did they, was there any discussion that the price might be different, that it wasn't a firm $1,500?
No, we, in fact, handed out registration sheets and a fee scale, which will now have to be revised. We will do a mailing out of the business office with the new registration sheets and the new kindergarten fee guidelines. There've been some wording changes on that top half of that page, too.
And then the guidelines, the numbers on this.
And then the guidelines on the bottom. And that fee across the bottom will read free for free meals. We're still using the school free and reduced lunch guidelines, because they're actually more generous towards parents. $500 for up to 50% of state median income. It will now be $800 for up to 85% of state median income, $1,200 up to 100% of state median income, and then the full $1,600 for anything over 100% of state median income. You can make those hand notations on your copies, and we'll send you corrected copies along with mailings to every parent who registered for kindergarten.
And is there any idea at all, I mean, were there any discussions at the registration about people asking for financial aid? I mean, are that still real?
I really don't know. I haven't been in personal contact with the principals as to...
There would be no discussion, because the goal was to have parents fill out the forms, per the request of this committee, that principals not be heavily involved in that process.
Elizabeth first.
Jerry, thank you very much. When the email came yesterday with the $1,800 fee, I swallowed hard and said, gosh, I wish it didn't have to go so high. So, thank you for taking a second look at this. But one of the things I did do over the last two days is I called a few people I know who have children who are kindergartners and younger children, just to get a sense of how they felt about this. And when they understood the parameters of why, and that it was being motivated by the state, and the fact that it will result in actually more aid going out to families with higher incomes, everyone felt very comfortable with it and felt it was well within what the budget was that they imagined they would be paying. And the people I spoke with are people who expect they'll be paying a full fee, so they're not people who expect they're going to be benefiting from the more favorable table here for assistance. So, anyway, I thank you very much, and I'm very happy that the recommendation is $1,600 rather than $1,800. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry that this is all last minute, and you have verbal recommendation which amends the revised recommendation which you got yesterday, but I want to give you up-to-date breaking news, as you said.
I had a couple of things to say. One is, I wanted to make sure that it's very clear to people that this idea, as you've just mentioned about the safety valve of using the Medco funds, is something that we have been do, we have been using Medco funds for kindergarten assistance for years.
That's correct.
And we didn't think that we were going to need to do that this time around. It's, so that is absolutely the logical place to think about where we might go for funds if we need to. And I just, I wanted to emphasize the point that you were making about, I didn't think you made the point forcefully enough, that it's something that we have done for a number of years, using Medco funds for that purpose, for kindergarten classroom assistance. And I also wanted to say that, that it's, I understand how incredibly difficult it is for the administration to have to now come forward and raise the fee after having gone through the kindergarten registration process last week, to now have to revise forms that have been handed out to all of those families that came in to register for kindergarten last week. And I want to thank the administration for, I guess, doing what needs to be done in terms of raising the fee, and I think that that is a signal that it's a very difficult thing after having told all these parents one thing, to now have to go back and tell them something else. It signals the school department's commitment to funding this program in the ways that we've discussed funding it, that we haven't turned to the operating budget to try and make up for what needs to happen here. We've taken the unfortunate step of needing to now tell parents something completely different than what we told them in the first place. And, you know, with that in mind, I think, I find myself in an incredibly strange position of having opposed putting fee-based full day kindergarten in place in the first place, but now being in favor of raising the fee to $1,600.
Thank you.
I have a question about the scale of waivers. Do you think we should, in the future, for other things we charge for, like athletic fees, apply a similar kind of scale, just to make it consistent for all of our fees? Or is that too much trouble?
That's a lot of work for the business office, I would think.
Business office does fee waivers for bus transportation. We can use a modified version of this, we might have fewer columns, fewer breakpoints.
I guess, you know, the top isn't all that high compared to this, and it's not as big a deal.
The athletic, the athletic waivers are basically handled by the athletic director and the high school principal, and we can talk to them about it, it's much more...
The downside of doing that is you're going to have to raise the figures higher so that you have enough waivers, and so enough money to offset the waivers, and I think that could be problematic on the Kuzmic side.
How many people do waivers for the high school athletics? Just curious, Bob Martin.
I think that does happen, yes.
This is just, you know, a dozen or a hundred?
I think, Mike has told me in the past, I can't recall what the number is, I know Foster had told me in the past, too. I mean, we can find that out.
Right.
Yeah, and that, we have the numbers on it, I just don't recall what they are.
And we give you every fall the information on the number of bus waivers. I don't have it with me right now, but we always do that.
Okay, we could combine the building rental fees with this same discussion, or vote separately?
Well, I would do separate motions, do one motion on C1. We voted to increase to three fees, which have direct budgetary impact, and only now that last paragraph should read $1,600.
Well, I would make a motion to increase athletic user fees at Belmont High School to $330 per student per year with a $600 family maximum, and to increase athletic and student activity fees at the Channery Middle School to $75 per student per year with $125 family maximum effective July 1, 2008, to increase regular transportation user fees to $385 per child with $770 family maximum effective July 1, 2008, and to institute a new full day kindergarten user fee of $1,600 per year, per child per year, effective July 1, 2008, with a sliding fee scale for the waivers as attached to the two items, C1 revised. Second.
Discussion on that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And abstain. Okay.
Moving on to C2, the building rental fee, which determines the revenue that flows into our revolving account, from which we draw a fund to fund portion of the budget, it's more indirect form of revenue, which is why I wanted to do it separately. This is something that I've been meaning to do, quite honestly, for the past two years. It's just been difficult to find the time to do a survey of other communities, and then to take the time to try to get comparability between our schedule and other communities. This is a quick summary, we have two categories of building rentals. One is for category one, which are the lower fees for all Belmont and nonprofit groups in Belmont. Category two is basically any group that does not meet both of those criteria, either a Belmont for profit group or any organization outside of Belmont. And the category two rates are basically, always have been traditionally double category one rates. The last time these fees were increased across the entire schedule was July 1, 1999, which was by my predecessor, before I even came here. So, it's, they've been quite stagnant for a number of years, and obviously, the cost of utilities have gone up, so we're, as much as we encourage use of our buildings, we're taking a bigger hit in terms of our cost for the use of that building. You see one sheet there that says recommendations for 20809, where I'm showing for category one on the left-hand column, the current rates, starting with $25 per classroom, and this is for four hours of use, and I recommend that be increased to $40 per classroom for, again, for four hours of use, et cetera. And then category two, the right-hand side, is basically the same current and the same recommended, double what it is for category one. We are now also adding a new fee of $100 per event for use of the fields. We've never had a fee for use of the field before, plus if it's an evening activity, $38 per hour for use of the lights. Beyond that, and are basically backup to this recommendation, we have a separate issue with the after-school room rentals. In 2005, 2006, three years ago now, the school committee chose to increase the flat rental rate for the after-school programs to $40 per day per room at the elementary, but they kept the Channery at $30 per day. My recommendation is to increase the Channery to the same $40 per day, but no increase in the elementary, so that they're the same. And the $40 per day now coincides with the $40 per classroom use for four hours, so it's as if we're putting the after-school room rental program back on scale rather than treating them separately. So, you see the revenue that's generated there, then we show you the current fee schedule as of July 1. Please note at the bottom of the current fee schedule that we do waive the rental fee for the following organizations, organizations whose mission directly relates to Belmont Public Schools, including PTOs and the Foundation, Belmont Municipal Departments, and Belmont Youth Organizations that are open-tal members of the Belmont community and operate on a nonprofit basis, including SCAD organizations and townwide sports programs. We still do, in some cases, have to charge a custodial fee to these organizations if it requires custodial time over and above our usual schedule, but we have the ability to waive the rentals. The next two pages in the handout are comparison to other communities, trying to equalize how different communities charge on a four-hour basis. And in the right-hand columns, you'll notice in the bold, there are two entries, one says Belmont currently, and one says Belmont recommended, which is bold and in italics. So, you see that basically, the recommended rates are not moving us up to the top of the list, if anything, they're moving us in all categories, classroom, gymnasium, auditorium, from lower on the list to somewhere in the midpoint on the list, and I feel comfortable with that. I was amazed when we did the survey, at the incredible range of rates among all these different communities, and some do it per hour, some do it per event, per use, and so to getting into a comparable four-hour usage, we had to do it this way. And then the last two sheets just indicate the raw data that we did gather. So, with that long-winded explanation, I'll take any questions on this, and I think in my memo, second page of my memo, I do have a recommended motion.
I had a question about the fields. I just wanted to be clear. So, the way that it's worked up until now is that people are able to use, and I assume we're only talking about the fields at the high school, right?
That we control.
Those are the only ones we control, the other ones are rec departments.
That's correct.
Okay. That up until now, there hasn't been a fee that people have been able to...
That's correct.
That outside organizations have been able to use them at no fee. Okay, and I guess it was clarifying just that it was the, only the high school.
It is only the fields that we control.
And then what about the pool? Is there, are there outside organizations that use the pool, and do we charge a fee for that?
There's one outside organization, Belmont Aquatic, and it's been, probably 10 years ago, a separate arrangement with them, there has been no fee schedule for the pool. Most of the non-school pool use goes to the recreation department, and we don't charge a fee to the recreation departments. We will contact Belmont Aquatics and update that arrangement proportionally. I had a lot of, I went back and forth with both Jim Davis and Bob Martin about, true, we also have on the schedule a pool fee rental, and there are a lot of pros and cons, we decided not to do with this year, and since there's only the one group that pays the fee, deal with them directly.
And that one fee has been coming into the...
It's been going into the revolving account, right, but it needs to be updated.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Can you just unilaterally do that?
I believe we can, yeah. It's our pool.
I mean, do you need our approval? Can you just say, all right, we're going to raise the rate?
I feel I can. If you disagree, then you're the boss.
You can't, not the boss.
Maybe I missed it. Is there a total dollar figure that is brought in during the course of the year with the current rates?
That's in your budget book, which I don't have a copy of with me.
That's right.
Under the revolving accounts.
I have it.
Okay. If it's over, I'll find it for you quickly.
It's a race.
This is a tremendous amount of data that Jerry's collected, and sort it out and assign, and I really think it's a good recommendation, and I do think it's important to, I can see why it doesn't get updated more often, because it's a lot of information to collect, but it certainly is. I really appreciate Jerry doing it.
Last year, FY07, we collected, just on the building rentals, $196,776. Now, that also includes some long-term leases. For example, we have a lease which we negotiate with the Lexington Chinese School for use of the high school every Sunday afternoon, and that is currently at $70,000, and next year, I negotiated an increase to $77,000, which they agreed to because of our rising utility costs. They have tremendous use of that building from like 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
That one organization's 35% of our total building rental for a year.
It really is.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
It's about $200,000 of $70,000, that's...
So, that, and then all the individual ones according to the scale.
How do people sign up for a... Like, there's always going to be soccer teams from all over greater Boston on the turf on the weekends, how do they...
Most of those...
Most of them are Belmont teams, playing teams from outside.
Especially not practices, but I forgot.
The scheduling of the field is handled through the athletic office.
Okay, if you get the first...
The scheduling of the auditorium at the high school is handled through the fine arts office, Mr. Captain Jesus and his secretary handle that. The scheduling of all the other buildings is handled through Sarah Weiner, who is a clerical person at the school administration. And we check with all the principals in terms of making sure the request for the rental is not conflicted with a school event. We check with Bob Martin to make sure that we can provide custodial coverage, and they all have to sign off on the application before it's confirmed.
Is there going to be any continuation of the rental of Wellington for the summer? The camp that's there over the summer?
That camp pulled out last summer, the Cambridge camp, they did not rent last summer after being there for a number of years.
And there doesn't look like there's potential for that?
No.
At least at this point.
And it's a mixed blessing, because it gave us an opportunity to get in there earlier and do more extensive cleaning and stuff for a apartment building before it started school.
I wanted to make sure we gave anybody in the audience an opportunity to comment, because I do know that Kendra is here.
Oh, we, I'm just, hi, I'm Kendra Brooks, I'm the director of the Channery Extended, and I just, Dr. Mizzell and I had exchanged emails, and I'm just...
Just wanted to make sure you had a chance, if you needed to.
I sit on the board also of the practical program, and I do want to thank you for giving us the three years' grace that you gave us, really did help us put that program on good footing, so I do want to thank you for that.
Will we consider gently raising these every year, or rather than, you know, whacking people every three or four years? whacking people every three or four years? I know it's a little more work for us to do.
Yeah. I think we definitely want to do it more than once every nine years. But every two to three years would be probably more opportune.
I mean, given the general inflation, it's justified.
Yeah, and the utility costs to us.
Hey, any more questions anywhere in the room?
You know, and I just wanted to make one comment that I wasn't sure that Jerry had made about how the money from those, from that revolving account then gets applied to our overall budget. That that's, so that people understand that that comes in and then helps us reduce the cost of operating.
It appears on the utilities page, we charge off some of the fuel oil accounts directly to the revolving account. For a couple of years, we're charging both fuel oil and electricity accounts. But now, fuel oil accounts are large enough by themselves that you can charge only those.
I just want to make sure people understand that direct connection and how allowing others to use our facilities helps offset our own costs.
Absolutely. And there's a state law that says if you have a fee, the revenue from that fee has to be used to support the activity. So we feel it's perfectly appropriate to charge utility deals back to the revolving account.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Yes. I'd like to move...
Elizabeth having her arm twisted.
I'd like to move that we vote to increase the building usage rate schedule effective July 1, 2008, as per the attached sheet labeled recommendations for 2008, 2009, and to increase the rental charge for the Chenex After-School Care Program to $40 per room per day. Second.
Discussion on that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay.
Thank you.
Excited as summer steps for the presses. Presses, okay.
The next item is we have a recommendation to award contract for three years for regular bus transportation to the, in the technical terms of the state requirements, to the lowest responsible and reasonable bid submitted by bus companies. We've had three bus companies submit bids. Our current bus company is Atlantic Express, and we would have been happy to stay with them. I think they deliver very good service. However, they did not submit the low bid. We checked the references on the low bids with each bus company, and they came out very positive. They basically have done Brookline, Cambridge for a number of years, Wellesley for a number of years. They had a three-year contract in Newton for a while. And all the references were positive. Our athletic director, Jim Davis, contacted his counterparts in those communities to make sure that the athletic trips are also decently handled. And we have no reason not to believe we're going to get good service from Eastern Bus Company. It's a large contract, over three years, a valued contract. When you figure in the athletics and all the field trips, it comes to possibly $1.3 million. So this is not to be taken lightly. And so my recommendation is to vote toward a contract to Eastern Bus Company.
Can we give them maps now?
Give them what?
Maps.
We do give them maps.
No, I mean now.
We actually, last week, we already had a meeting with the president of the company, talked about some of our issues, got verbal confirmations from him that he could meet all of our requests. And we do insist that they do extensive training in August. The first two weeks of the new contract are always horrendous. And that was true even with our present contractor three years ago. But once the driver's learned to do this, if it's a good contractor, they settle in quickly.
Did we have Eastern ones before?
Not since I've been here. We've had, the third company, the pit high, Go Cell, was the contractor before Atlantic Express.
Oh, okay.
So since I've been here, we've had Leylaw, Go Cell, Atlantic Express, and no Eastern.
When we send out the mailing to parents about the bus service and their option to take that service for a fee, et cetera, or if they qualify, if they're two miles away and don't have to pay the fee. When we do that mailing, can we include information for parents about the fact that this is a new contract? And about, you know, something very brief about the process, the state law that requires us to take the lowest responsible bidder? And the expectation that with any new bus contract, there will be some things that need to be worked out in the first two weeks or so? So that, so that people are aware that it's a new bus contract and have the expectation that we're doing our very best to help the new bus company get acclimated? And that, you know, it should only be a short-term, you know, sort of, right. The learning curve should be, you know, fairly quick one. But that there should be some expectation that, you know, there may be some issues to begin with. We're hoping there won't be, but, and if there are, that they will be cleared up very quickly.
I think that's a good suggestion.
To avoid the inevitable onslaught of calls that will come in the first few days.
Oh, yes.
So that people at least know it's a new contract.
Right. That's a good suggestion. I'll do that.
Okay. I move to, for the contract for regular bus transportation for 2008 to 2011 to Eastern Bus Company, Somerville Mass., at their low bid prices opened on March 27, 2008, and to direct the Director of Finance and Administration to enter into a contract with Eastern Bus Company on behalf of the Belmont School Committee. Second.
Discussion on that. Those in favor?
Aye.
I'm not going to do anything else.
Next item is position in front of performing arts plans of action. Will I come up here?
Pat, introduce Bill and his guests.
Well, Mr. Peppesius has been ready for months to do this. And we keep putting him off and putting him off. And we're very lucky that he's here tonight. He's actually, he's running from a class that he's teaching at Boston University. So we asked, he asked if he could be on the agenda a little bit late, and we're happy that he's here. The process that we follow in Belmont is a curriculum review cycle. It's a seven-year cycle that we, all of the disciplines move through. And the purpose of the cycle is to provide opportunity to support each discipline in reviewing and revising current practice in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment. Secondly, it also allows for the implementation of any kind of change plans, particularly at the elementary level, to be done in a cyclical fashion so that an elementary school teacher doesn't have a lot of different plan changes or curriculum changes coming his or her way. And lastly, in the ideal world, it allows for the equitable distribution of resources. And that could be funds for new materials, it could be professional development opportunities for teachers, it could be summer curriculum work. And again, rather than having all of the curriculum areas bunched up in one or two years, we try to spread those, those different disciplines across the cycle. For the last two years, we really ask each discipline to be in an evaluation mode. And in year six, there's an internal evaluation process. And different disciplines run their internal evaluation different ways. But it usually includes parental input, staff, and student surveys. It includes review of the literature, what is the most current in a particular field in terms of research and development, sometimes visits to other programs and so forth. And then in the seventh year, we ask that a team of experts, usually a combination of high school and collegiate experts in the field, should come in and spend two or three days in the, in the school with the director, visiting all of the programs. And all of the information that the director and the steering committee members have gathered during year six is presented then to the outside team so that they have a sense of what the department itself, or the program itself, is, has said and how that internal evaluation went. Following that, the responsibility then falls to the director primarily to take all of the recommendations that an external team has made and put together a draft, which is a draft of the Plan of Action. And one final comment that you will find as you look through all of the plans of action when they come to you is that the directors have all agreed that their plans of actions will mirror the strategic plan. So you'll see the goals of the strategic plan incorporated into their discipline plan of action. But of course, their, their action steps, while addressing some of the goals of the strategic plan, are peculiar to each of the disciplines. So I really want to congratulate Mr. Peppesius because, per usual, he has done a wonderful job in terms of evaluation. It was a heady process. And while he has a wonderful team of teachers and steering committee members, I do have to thank you very much for all of the leadership you put into this and all the responsibility you took. You did a wonderful job, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Be brilliant, no pressure.
Well, the Plan of Action presented to you this evening provides a detailed roadmap for a strategic change and improvement to teaching and learning the arts for all students enrolled in Belmont Public Schools. The arts are defined by the national standards for the arts and the Massachusetts Arts Curriculum Framework as art, dance, music, and drama. And I'm proud to say that we offer learning opportunities in each of those disciplines, however, with primary focus on art and music. In an effort to solicit broad membership and participation by the professional staff and members of the community, in the 2004, 2005 school year, the Department Steering Committee conducted surveys of parents, students, and professional staff. Overall, the results of the surveys indicated a high degree of satisfaction with our arts programs. And here are some highlights from the data collected and corresponding assumptions that were made by members of the steering committee. The vast majority of responses came from parents who had middle and high school children. And the responses represented over 700 students in the Belmont schools, grades K through 12. And that was an indication to us that, that more needs to be done to directly inform parents about their child's educational program in the arts at the elementary level. Our program is fairly intensive at the middle school and high school level. And it's, it's also the most visible in that most of our, all the performances that take place and presentation exhibitions are primarily done by, by middle school and high school students. And so we need more, we need to do more to inform our elementary parents about the programs that we offer. We also learned that, that community values, that the community values arts education and is supportive of our role to engage its youth in rich educational opportunities in the arts. And the community, we also learned that the community has very high expectations for our programs in the arts. And we also learned through the data that, through our surveys, that more work needs to be done in the area of assessment to provide parents and students with, with specific, more specific and growth-promoting feedback relative to their achievement in the various arts disciplines that we offer here in the Belmont Public Schools. And we also found that overall, that overall, parents seem to be very satisfied with their children's experiences in our fine and performing arts programs. But they also felt at the same time that there's, that there are clearly some areas in need of improvement. And respondents, in this regard, respondents felt that they would like to see additional arts electives, particularly offered at the high school level in theater and in dance and in non-performing arts electives, such as music theory or art history, those, those kinds of, those kinds of courses. The data collected from the surveys, along with subsequent assumptions formulated by the steering committee, provided a basis for discussion relative to program improvement from the perception of the community. The steering committee engaged the fine and performing arts staff in a detailed internal scan of our visual art, music, theater, and dance programs through which each faculty member was asked to identify very specific strengths and weaknesses in their respective disciplines and grade levels at which they taught. For each need that the faculty members identified, they were also asked to develop a, a recommendation for improvement or a solution to the issue. The faculty surveyed was, the faculty survey was directly aligned with the guiding principles that are articulated by our Massachusetts Arts Curriculum Framework. And relative to the guiding principle on curriculum and program, our staff provided us feedback on content, on, on content of our curriculum, vertical alignment, sequencing, gaps and overlaps in the curriculum. They provided us feedback on course offerings, instructional time, resources and budget allocation, instructional equipment, staffing, facilities, technology integration, and co-curricular opportunities. So the, the surveys that they, our staff did were very, very extensive and very detailed. And again, each, each staff member that participated, in fact, they all participated, were asked to not only identify a strength or, not only identify a strength or a need, but to also provide what they thought might be a viable solution or to, or a recommendation for improvement. And based on our personal knowledge, our professional experience, and several readings, the steering committee identified external, educational, artistic, political, economical, social, and technological trends, forces in changing conditions that are likely to affect education in the arts in the Belmont Public Schools. And this analysis led us to the identification of opportunities and challenges that would likely influence the direction of program renewal for the, for the coming, for the coming years. And using the data collected from the staff and community surveys, the programmatic needs identified by the department faculty and the committee's perception of the opportunities and challenges confronting arts education here in Belmont, the steering committee developed the department's mission and vision statements, guiding beliefs, and K-12 department-wide learning goals that are consistent with the school district's educational mission. Once approved by the, the department faculty, the mission and vision statements and the guiding beliefs served as the basis for the steering committee's work in developing the Plan of Action. It provided the committee with focus and direction for its work in defining priorities and essential areas for growth. The mission statement declares the department's purpose, which is to educate all students in a supportive, nurturing, and challenging environment by providing them with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities for expression in art, music, drama, and dance that enable them to actively participate as consumers and makers of the arts in a diverse global community. The vision statement presents a picture of an ambitious future that improves the current condition of teaching and learning in the arts over the next seven years. And these are highlights from the vision statement that you, that you have in the, in the report before you. And our vision is that the Belmont schools will provide comprehensive and challenging opportunities in each of the arts disciplines, that we will provide access to essential resources for teaching and learning in the arts, that we will develop students' capacity in the arts, capacities in the arts, that will prepare students to live and contribute to a diverse and global community through, in and through the arts. And that, and, and that through our efforts, that students will understand the role of the arts in individuals and in society and in cultures, that they'll understand the range and depth of the imagination and its possibilities. And they will understand the full potential for personal growth and the role that the arts play in that, in that personal growth. The guiding beliefs of the department describe the values and beliefs of the department and provide a framework for continuous program renewal. An effective arts curriculum provides opportunities to create and perform in art, music, theater, and dance, and to learn about heritage and culture and the connections among the arts and other disciplines. Through education in the arts, students learn modes of personal expression, learn to communicate and share ideas, and develop their intellectual curiosity and creative thinking. We believe that all students can learn in and through the arts and are entitled to challenging sequential curriculum that is taught during the school day by highly qualified faculty. As a department, we also believe that by the completion of grade 12, students will have, develop proficiency, proficiency in at least one of the arts. And that is also a recommendation, a strong recommendation made through the Massachusetts Arts Curriculum Framework. In grades K through eight, the, the, the focus is on exposure to all of the arts. And by the end of grade eight, with, with basic level proficiency in at least two of the arts, in at least two of the arts disciplines. And, and the frameworks asks that by the end of high school, that students develop a basic proficiency, proficiency in at least one of the arts forms by the time they graduate the public schools. And most recently, the, the arts have been included in the, in the mass core recommendations for high school graduation. The K-12 department-wide goals articulate the four essential curriculum strands and reflect the tenets of the Massachusetts Arts Curriculum Framework. We found... There we go. The, the curriculum frameworks are very, it's, it's, it's a heavy document and it's, and it's intensive in its, in its language. And we, and we sort of took it, took the frameworks and we, we sort of boiled it down to four, four major goals: creating, performing, perceiving, and responding, and making connections. And our, these four department learning goals... And our, these four department learning goals serve as a curriculum paradigm that authentically embodies all of what people do in and through the arts in their everyday life. As, as consumers of the arts, or as makers of the arts, we are, we are, we are creating, we are performing, we are perceiving and responding to the arts, and we're making connections, either personal connections, connections with our, with our community, connections with, with other cultures. In the 2006 and 2007 school year, the visiting team was asked to identify program strengths and areas for growth and to submit a report with its findings and recommendations to the Director of Fine and Performing Arts. And the team, this team provided us with feedback on our written curriculum documents, curriculum alignment and continuity, instructional resources that included staffing and instructional materials, equipment, and facilities, our co-curricular and curricular program offerings. And we asked, also asked for specific feedback regarding inclusiveness of program offerings with regard to ethnic, racial, and cultural diversity of our, of student participation. And in addition to that, we asked them for, for feedback on opportunities that we provide for content, content-based professional development programs for our teachers. And during their three-day visit, members of the visiting team observed classes, interviewed the faculty and administration, and met with the Steering Committee. And from January through May 2007, the Steering Committee developed the Plan of Action. The action steps respond to the visiting team's report and are grounded in the department's mission and vision statements and guiding beliefs. In addition, this Plan of Action is aligned with the Belmont Public Schools 2005 through 2010 strategic improvement goals. The, the, the Plan presents five major program enhancements. And the first is to reinstate the grade seven music requirement in an effort to provide a, a curricular learning opportunity for grades, for seventh graders who are not in band, chorus, or orchestra. We anticipate that such a program will be computer-based and grounded in musical composition, improvisation, and other hands-on authentic music learning experiences. It's the only grade in which students are not required to, to enroll in music is grade seven. And so we would like to fill in that gap. At the high school level, we would like to consider additional course offerings in graphic design, in theater, in theater arts, and in non-performance music electives, and also in dance electives. And in fact, this year, we, for the 2008, 2009 school year, we are implementing a new course at the high school, History of, History of Popular Music. And it's been very well received, and, and so this is one of the recommendations for the plan that is, that is, that is being implemented for next year. And we are also introducing a new theater course this year. A modern, it's called the Modern Actor. And, and I think what's, what's also noteworthy from a budget perspective is that we've been able to introduce these new programs to students within, within the confines of our, of our, of our current, of our current staffing level. We would, another area that we see as, as, as critical is providing students with, with ensemble instruction at grade, at grade five. Presently, our students have, they have in-school lessons, but there is no opportunity for them to participate in an ensemble, which is the purpose of, of taking the lessons. Another recommendation is to reinstate the kindergarten art program. And again, that is, that will be coming into fruition in the, in the fall with the, with the implementation of full-day kindergarten. And based on, and finally, based on the high school, based on the Massachusetts Arts Curriculum Framework, we would, we're looking towards, we'll, we'll be investigating ways in which to revise the high school arts graduation requirements so that kids can develop a proficiency in at least one of the art forms. Each of the action steps is aligned with, with the goals of the strategic improvement plan. And in curriculum instruction assessment, we are going to be revising all of our K-12 curriculum, curriculum, curricula, in, particularly in art and music, to reflect the department's major learning goals and to articulate essential content, knowledge, and skills at, at the grade level. Currently, our, our curriculum is, is, is structured in clusters rather than by specific grade levels. And so that we have, we'll be able to articulate skills and, and concepts that are taught at specific grade levels, rather than by the end of grade two or by the end of grade four. We really want to know what kids are learning and, and what we're going to be teaching in each of the grade levels specifically. We, we'll be looking at revising the middle school art electives at the eighth grade to better meet the needs and interests of our students. And, and we'll be working on developing assessment tools, particularly in grades K through four, to ensure curriculum continuity and to provide students and parents with, with growth, growth-promoting feedback regarding their, their students' achievement, achievement in the arts. We'll be looking at the way in which we, again, in, in, through grade eight, we'll be looking at revising our progress reports and how we, and how we do that, and how we communicate with parents. We'll be expanding the use of technology to enhance teaching and learning and facilitate authentic assessment for student achievement, particularly in music, where our classes are so large. Assessing 70 students is, is a huge, huge task. And we're going to look towards, look to technology to help us solve some of those issues so that we can get feedback out to, to parents and students in a, in a, in a meaningful and very efficient way. We, we're going to look at the way in which we designate our, our high school arts courses in terms of honors and, or college, or college prep. And in an effort to reach our goal, to make sure that, that students are proficient in at least one of the art forms, we would like to investigate increasing the high school graduation requirement from one year to two years so that students will be able to meet that goal. Goal two, student life. We are, we are looking to implement programs that will attract and retain minority students to, to our performing arts programs. And we'll be looking at other districts, at other districts that are similar to Belmont to see what kinds of programs that they offer so that, so that we can begin to bridge those gaps with, with, with students, with all students within the school. We are going to, we're going to explore possibilities for implementing an on-campus, low-cost, after-school, private lesson programs for students in grades six through 12. Currently, we have Saturday School. We have our Saturday School enrichment program, which is for our elementary students. But after elementary school, after, after grade five, there really are no opportunities for students, for students in our program, within our school district, to, to study, to study privately. And we're hoping to, to bring, to be able to find a way to bring teachers here to Belmont into the schools and, and work with our students after school. And again, we want to make this as accessible as possible to all students. And so it will hopefully be a low-cost or no-cost program. School management and leadership. We'll be working and have already started to work on routinely collecting and tracking enrollment data by program and activity and by population, by population subgroups. And this will help us in evaluating, in part, our program effectiveness as it relates to participation, student participation in the program and, and student interest in our programs. Goal four, human resource development. Over the next five to seven years, to, to implement all of the recommendations that are within this plan, we anticipate needing an additional 2.6 FTE over the next seven years in, 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 in each of the disciplines. In, in music, the, the 0.8 FTE represents some expansion at, at the elementary level, particularly with the string program where there are so many students, and we have one teacher that is, is responsible for the entire program, K through 12. And also to reinstate the general music curriculum, the general music program for grade seven. In visual art, 0.6 of the, of the 1.0 is kindergarten art, which is in our budget for 2008, 2009. And the 0.4, the additional 0.4 would be for a graphic design program, which we actually won't be able to implement until, until renovation, until we have, until the space is renovated at the high school level. So that's a long ways off, hopefully before 2014. And in, in theater, again, to implement the new courses that we're proposing, and, and, and then 0.4 to offer dance at the high school level. And so that our students, so in this regard, we'll have a full and comprehensive program in the arts for, for all of our students. We'll also be looking to develop additional content-based professional development opportunities for arts teachers, and we'll be looking to area organizations such as Edco and American Call Directors Association, the Massachusetts Music Educators Association, and the Mass Art Educators Association. Although we have a fairly large staff, when you break it down by, by discipline, the numbers are fairly small. And it's, it's not always as cost-effective as, as we would like it to be to bring in, to bring professional development into this, into the school district for such a small group of teachers in a, in a particular discipline. So we'll be looking for, towards outsourced resources to fill that need. Goal five, community communications and community relations. We'll be working with our existing parent groups, POMs, and PRTs to effectively coordinate volunteers that are, that are needed to assist with our various, with our various programs and events in the school district, particularly in music and theater. We have a lot of kids in those programs, and, and, and there is a great deal of organization that needs to, to take place to, to efficiently use parent volunteers to help us out. And in an effort to, to prevent overlap in, in, in parent group activities, we'll be planning some joint meetings between, with, with groups to discuss, you know, commonalities and to, and to, to find ways to more effectively and efficiently meet the needs of, of each of the programs.